All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, Mike Holden.
Here.
Michelle Hedner. Tony Corpius.
Here.
Jennifer Windows.
Here.
Ted Saxton here. Terry Murray.
Here.
Roxanne Scokes-Addeed.
Here.
Kevin Grover.
Here.
Ella Bar-Jeffrey, student rep. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Terry and a second by Roxanne. Any further discussion?
The only question I would have is on number 25 is that short-term rental is for, and again, it has a cancellation clause for use of the strategic plan, you know, the April 7th. My only thought would be leave it in, approve, and let us, you know, that way the contract's been approved and we'll adjust dates.
Yeah, they won't care what date we do.
So, I just want you to know that'll be adjusted, but I think we leave it in and it's...
All right, any further discussion? Here none will call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. All right, we're gonna move on to public open forum. Thank you to everybody who showed up today. We're gonna start with presentation of Elks March Students of the Month. Madeline Olson and Jackson Germain.
Do you want to do February's?
And, okay, and presentation of Elks February Student of the Month, Caitlin Kelstead.
Okay, so February, Caitlin Kelstead. Caitlin had cheer for hockey, so she was unable to attend. Caitlin Kelstead is the Elks February Female Student of the Month. Caitlin is an extremely dedicated and goal-driven student that always looks to challenge herself and those around her. She has been on the principal's list, received academic excellence awards, and has challenged herself academically by taking honors, current enrollment classes, and PSEO classes throughout her high school career. Caitlin is a member of the Minnesota Honor Society. She is also very involved with extracurricular activities as a member of the swimming and diving team, hockey cheerleading, track and field, and dancing with Darcy. Additionally, Caitlin carries both her CPR and lifeguard certifications. When not involved in academics and activities, she has volunteered with the Falls Hunger Coalition, Falls Education Foundation, and blood drive donor. Caitlin works at Camp Idlewood as a cleaning assistant and as a lifeguard for both the City of International Falls and International Falls Community Education. She is planning to attend Vamiji State University in the fall to pursue a degree in exhibit design. Caitlin Kelstead, the Elks February Female Student of the Month. Madeline Olson, so now we're into March. Madeline Olson is the Elks March Female Student of the Month. Madeline is a dedicated student and role model in our school and community. She has received high honors and academic excellence awards throughout her high school career. Madeline is a member of the Minnesota Honor Society. She is also very involved in extracurriculars as a member of our volleyball, basketball, and track and field teams. Additionally, Madeline has been involved with the Minnesota High School rodeo as well as participated in International Falls figure skating and dancing with Darcy, both for nine years. When not involved in academics and activities, she has volunteered with her church youth group, the Little Fork Saddle Club, and various activities with the Elks Lodge. Madeline works as a sales associate for 1171 Boutique and at Cine5. She is planning to attend Vamiji State University in the fall to pursue a degree in business management. Madeline Olson, the Elks March Female Student of the Month. And last, but certainly not least, Jackson Germain. Jackson Germain is the Elks March Male Student of the Month. Jackson is a hard, very hard-working and considerate student. He has received academic honors throughout his high school career. Along with maintaining excellent grades in the classroom and challenging himself with concurrent enrollment classes, he has been very involved in athletics. Jackson is a member of the football team, captain and member of the hockey team, and member of our track and field team. He recently received the Hobie Baker Character Award in hockey. This exemplifies the character that Jackson models in our school and community. Outside of these activities, he volunteers for the BFW, prom, Bronco Hockey Boosters, the Elks, and the local food shelf. Jackson currently works for Bob Davis Construction. Next year, he plans to attend Hibbing Community College for law enforcement. Jackson Germain, the Elks March Male Student of the Month.
We'll do one more open forum thing and then we'll take a brief break. All right, presentation of diploma to Garrett Lyons, recent graduate of the ALC. You guys something to read?
No, I would just, first of all, like to, come on up, Garrett. We can go over here. Congratulate our newest graduate. I guess I'm very pleased, very honored, not only for Garrett and his accomplishments, but as we've done with several over the last year here of students that have taken an alternative course, whatever that may mean, but yet they have seen the value of an education. And I was just talking with Garrett and his mother on the way up that, you know, the diploma is something you can't take away. And I'm just, I'm very proud and excited that you did finish it up. I know Mr. Grewatz and Mrs. Tonado are very proud of you. Both of them wish they could be here today. So, congratulations and chair.
All right, moving on to, we do not have a presentation from the robotics, although that's awesome and they have a great program, so I can't wait to listen to them. All right, moving on to consent agenda as printed. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mike and a second by Tony. There is no further discussion unless you want clarification on something. Here none will call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. All right, action item number one, resolution of acceptance of gifts and donations. Where a school board policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district, whereas International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Where the Minnesota statute 465.03 states that the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be resolved, the school board of International Falls, IC 361, accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. For the Bronco Hall of Fame from Northern Reliable Insurance, $250. From speech, or for speech club from Communication and Theater Foundation for travel expenses, $1,000. FHS Athletic Program from PCA Mill of International Falls, $1,000. And the FHS Science Department received a digital microscope from Rainy Lake Medical Center. I'll entertain a motion to approve the gifts and donations.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Terry and a second by Jen. Here none, or here no further discussion, we'll call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries unanimously. Here we go. Oh, maybe not. One sec. There it is. All right. Approve school calendar version C for school year 2020-21. I'll entertain a motion. If you, if, for the purpose of discussing, if you wanna pick a different one, we can have a motion on this one, but we have to have something to start the conversation.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Got a motion by Roxanne and a second by Tony. All right, let's discuss.
Okay, so how this takes place, just for instance, we are technically required to meet and confer with the teachers' group on calendars, and we are to have a calendar in place by the end of March. And so, what I did is version A and version B are the two that I put together. And again, very similar to what we've had, there is a little bit of flexibility. Things have changed from year to year, but for the most part, I laid that out, gave it to them for, you know, their discussion. They have a right, you know, to, we'd like this, but change this. So, my understanding is, I think they put it out and somehow it came back that a significant group was looking at, they would like a spring break of some sort. And so, I believe, I'm gonna say version C, and I think they had a version D, not that they have to give that to us, with a couple different options with a spring break, so to speak, a week long in it. What came back to me was that they were in favor of version C, which is, like I say, their tweak, it meets the days and stuff. It has a spring break, I'm gonna say attached to Easter, so to speak. The vote came in 33-32. They gave that and one other. And what, well, what I'm gonna tell you is years back, when I was in the union, we did the same thing. One year, there was three versions. It came out as close, like 33-30, you know, there might have been 90 people, 30-30-30. I mean, you couldn't on purpose come up and get a group to, and it just works out that way. So, again, I guess what I throw to you is, we can accept what they have. I don't have, how would I say, I have my personal preferences. I'm not saying they're educationally strong or not. And so, that's the only problem I have. If I put my one vote in, you know, I may go with one of the other two, you know, if we threw it out to custodians, if we threw it out. So, I'm not saying there's a right or wrong answer. A and B, the only difference really is, you know, there's always some, some people want, you know, an extra day or two at, you know, Christmas time if you can. You know, some, in the past, we always had, I'm gonna say, two exchange days over hunting. I can respect that, you know, over the last year or two, they went down to one day there and put one later in the year, you know. Not all of us are hunters, so to speak. I don't know why, but, you know, and so the same thing here, you know. All I can say is, you know, the teachers' group, being minor, was more in favor of, you know, having a spring break, so to speak. It still falls within, you know, the start-then-time. They all did agree, they wanna keep it as condensed as possible. So, I don't have much more to go on.
So, who's got something they wanna add?
So, I personally don't like seeing my son miss school as much as possible, all right. And deer hunting is important, among other things, with you. So, we're gonna be taking days off, and I prefer to be able to take it off without missing school. The spring break, I don't see how that being so important to the kids. When you mix it, you know, I think a lot of kids deer hunt, don't they?
Well, and I'll be honest with you, we have, you know, it varies. We have kids, say we, we used to have Thursday, Friday of this, what I call the first week, second weekend, that was typically, yeah, a chunk of kids took those off. A chunk took all week. A chunk took when their parents, you know, say the parent's schedule, I'm just gonna say you're a mill worker, and they had the next week off, they would take time there as well, you know. I mean, same with a spring break, I hate to say it. It might work good for our schedule, meaning if I was a teacher, and yeah, if I have a week, that's the week I'm gonna, you know, I'm not gonna say have to, but without burning all my vacation, I could do that. But on the flip side, it's gonna depend if parents are willing to, because we do have some parents that take, you know, kids on once-in-a-lifetime trips or whatever. Will they use that or not?
Will it be at that time, is the question?
I can't tell, you know, if they can, maybe. I know there was one group, and again, I'm not saying it's right or wrong within our group. They didn't want it around Easter because flights are more expensive, you know, vacation. But I don't think, they put it somewhere else, it really changed the calendar a little bit, you know, meaning, I don't know, went right up to the 24th, there were no other, you know. It was, so, I'm not disagreeing, Terry. My personal, yeah, I'd like to have a day or there, but if you put a day there, we end up going, you know, later in June, two days, you know, with keeping a spring break deal. And I don't know if I'm in favor of that either. I mean, I hear you. I don't, there isn't a right or wrong answer, I don't think. There is some thought, I'm just gonna be honest with you, of, I would like to, I would like to have some more discussion as we move further down the road, not for next year, but maybe looking at altering our calendar and days. For instance, the day in January that comes along is really attuned to when the quarter ends, or the semester ends, that's when we've had that date. I'll be honest, I would like to, you know, have some discussion and get the groups to agree. We should have it the week earlier for the most part because of the holiday that's there. Many parents have that holiday off. And then find a different way, you know, the quarter or semester could still end later. But I just, you know, I feel strongly that we should more maybe look at developing, I don't know if equitable is the right word, but, you know, honoring, you know, some things that deserve to be honored, if we're gonna have a day close there. Because, again, years ago, I think that day was there because in rocks, you can chime in, when we used to have to fill out actual grade report cards, tally your grades up, add everything up, there was always a half-day for, you know, work time, let alone grading, whether you had finals or whatever. In this day and age, I'm not saying we don't have work to do, but most submitting grades is fitting in, you know, so to speak. You might have end of this term, so I think we can work to move that forward. It's just not gonna be at the end of the court. You know, there's always work to do, and I think, like I say, it's just like having President's Day off. I think it's, you know, it's in our contracts, many of them, but it's there for the, I'm gonna say, right reason. And so, again, I think that's a bigger discussion than, we don't just move it tonight and move down that road. But I think I'd like to have some conversations, you know, to try and get it to be more built for the right reason, and we can still accomplish what we need to have. No, I'm just gonna, I just wanted, I will admit, and I'm not saying I agree, but many of the schools in northern Minnesota have gotten away from the deer hunting days. And I'm not saying it's right. It is a, I'm gonna say, a tradition to a certain extent for, you know, families in this area, but, you know, for whatever various reasons, we're seeing less and less of those days off. There are definitely calendars with them still, though.
Ted, I guess, I'll just speak to the other side of the coin about spring break, and I wonder if just this year, maybe we wanna, you know, support that spring break because being someone who was supposed to have a spring break myself, and I didn't get to go, because, you know, there might be people who really are gonna wanna travel next year because I think possibly their spring break this year is kind of ruined, so, so there.
That's the first summer there on a school board. Yes, Ted?
When's Easter?
That was a sorbetal.
Sorry, I just gotta get, it falls, the, I believe Good Friday is that second, so that date has to be off. And so, it's, yeah, it's going, you know.
If you wouldn't have the Monday after off, you'd have the week before off.
Well, I wanna speak on behalf of deer hunting. Thank you. Yes, I have five children that came through High Falls High School, and I know how important the deer hunting is in this area. And so, I wanna back up Terry on deer hunting. And I think deer hunting is a huge tradition here in International Falls. I don't, I really, you know, I know what Kevin's saying about some of the other schools changing, but for here, I don't think it gets any better than that to have your kids be able to go deer hunting and having time off, so, for that.
Which one of these is the deer hunting?
Well, both, if you, if you look at, let's just look at A, for instance. So, they all start at the same time, they have the three days before school. If you look at, I'm looking at version A right now. We have 15th and 16th of October is MEA. When you get to November, then we have the Monday of opening weekend and the Friday. You know, the two days are both put in there. At Christmas, we would go through the 23rd, because then again, I hear from, you know, parents that have gone, going through the 24th, you can tell, especially if you have any travel. And, you know, so, anyway, that one's done on 23rd. We come back on Monday, the 4th of January. We have the 25th off, which is the end of the semester. Then we have President's Day in February. There's a day in March, which is kind of like this year. This Friday is technically our, you know, the other exchange day. This one just happens, we needed one more non-contact day. We have Good Friday and the Monday after Easter off in April. Nothing in May other than the holiday, and then we're done. The 3rd with kids, teachers on the 4th. If you look at version B, it is very similar. Start of the year is the same time, MEA in October. There's only one day at deer hunting. Again, then there's Thanksgiving, which is in all of them. You're done a day earlier for Christmas, you know, that we were, only go Monday, Tuesday, so there's a little, you know, there's another day which some appreciate. Come back the same time, the same day in January, same day in February. There's still that day in March. Easter's the same, May's the same, and we're done the same time. So, the only difference is adding another day to Christmas, you know, that break compared to... And again, we could come up with version D. Maybe, I mean, I'm not trying, we need a calendar tonight. But I mean, if someone said, hey, let's not put the day on the 23rd in December, let's put it on, you know, the first, that Thursday before Easter, so at least, you know, if someone needed to take down the missed three days. You know, I mean, there's conversation, or has been, we don't have to have the Monday after Easter off. I mean, you know, if you're a traveler for that, it is obviously nice. You could put, you know, the 30th, sorry, am I right? The 31st of March, 5th could go, I mean, there's a variation. And again, if you survey this board, it's not gonna be, you know.
Fairly.
So, in the past, when there's, it just often tried to work, work this out with the teacher, with the staff, and then oftentimes, they'll have a majority more than they do now, or is it?
Not very often, to be honest. I mean, from my experience and...
It's always kind of split.
If you put two versions, it comes very close to 50-50, because we all have preferences. If you put three, it comes very close to a third, a third, a third. I don't, I can't speak to if we've ever went against, you know, their, I mean, normally, we've taken what they have, but we have no right to have it. We just have to meet and confer, take their suggestions, and talk about it, you know. So, I, like I say, educationally, I can't say any of these are better than the other. That's where I'm at.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, as a person that if I was on the teaching side and didn't have, you know, my vacation life I do now, I'd want one or two, you know, A or B. Even having one day is better than none. But I also hear the fact that, you know, as a teacher, maybe we wanted to take a family vacation, I may lean the other way, you know. I don't have...
So, we, we have a motion, does anybody, since the way that I presented it in the beginning was to start the conversation, I'll entertain any amendments.
So, I guess I just have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
How you said we could move the 23rd of December to November? Why not just do that, and then you still have your additional spring break day? You have your one hunting day.
You mean move like the 23rd to April?
The 23rd of December.
Move that to like, are you saying April 1st?
No, would you move it for, like, on your Schedule C, you don't have a hunting day, correct?
Yeah.
So, what if you move that to November?
Go look at Schedule C, or go look at Calendar C.
Right.
Okay, if we talk that one, it starts the same time, MEA in October. Notice in November, there's no hunting.
Right, so I'm saying, what if you gave the 23rd to like the...
But look on that schedule, there is no 23rd in December. They stole, I don't wanna say stole that day, but they moved that day.
You can't take this one.
I, you know, and maybe it's just me, I think to all of a sudden have a five-day spring break, taking days from all throughout the year to make that happen, I'm just not in favor of that, sorry.
You know, I can respect, like I say, but we need to, like I say, we need to either amend, take something and see if it passes or not, you know, work through the process.
Terry, would you like to make an amendment to the motion?
Amendment for Calendar A or B or... I would, I mean, I'd love to have two days off for deer hunting, but I understand, you know, one is an awful nice thing. So, I would go with, I'd like to amend it that we go with Schedule B.
Okay, I got a, a motion to amend, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so now I have an amendment by Terry and a second by Mike. Okay, we're back into discussion on number, or number B. What letter B now here? If there isn't any discussion, we can vote on that, and we can vote on C afterwards.
Well, just so everyone's clear, if this passes, we're done.
Yep.
If it, you know, if it fails, then we go back to either voting on C or someone amends.
Amendment A.
So, here's the deal, you can also, if you wanna change the day, we're up, we can have one more amendment. So, if you wanna change one day on B or something like that, before we gotta go back down the list for Robert's Rules. So, if you wanted a AB hybrid, a BC hybrid, anything, this is your chance.
For discussion, if it went B, and you moved the 5th to the 1st of April, you'd have what? Kevin is...
Right, but if you have people traveling to family on Easter Sunday, then they're gonna be missing Monday anyway. I like the idea of Monday being off.
I think no matter what you get, you're getting people traveling conflicts, I think, anyway. Kevin, do you know how many people, do you have a feel for how many people are hunters? How many families are hunters nowadays? Are we, are we less than we were before hunting families in this school, or more?
Well, I would say this, obviously, our population is down, you know, compared to 20 years ago. So, the number of hunters is definitely down.
No, I meant ratio.
Yeah, is the percentage changed? I don't know. I can tell you, I guess my feeling, I don't have data on this, is we have a different number that prioritize that on the teaching staff than we did years ago. I mean, you know, years ago, whether no one dared question it or whatever, I, you know, I don't know, but I mean, years ago, it never came up, and for many years, it was always that Thursday, Friday, Thursday, Friday, Thursday, Friday. A few years back, I did propose, what about Monday, Friday? Just the fact of something, you still got the two days, but it'd be nice to stay at the shack opening weekend, you know, Sunday instead of rushing home. And it went over very well. And, you know, in essence, had two longer weekends, but then...
I don't know what you're saying, though. Do you, are you saying you think there's, ratio-wise, there's less, more, or you don't know?
I don't know as far as students, if the ratios change at all. There's a lot of young men and women that look forward to it. But I think as far as employees that value, you know, that time at that, you know, in November, I think it's changed because that's why they put out, you know, your recommendation. As far as custodians, you know, we have a fair number, you know, and it gets tight there.
So, you think employees are valuing more the time and Easter time?
No, I, well, what I'm saying is, I think there's, like I say, there's less that have said, yeah, we have to have that, there's more that want some other variation. You know, of course, we're, we're less of a staff too, you know what I'm saying? But there's enough that they voted by one person to have this instead of something else.
So, I know if you don't have days during hunting season, you're gonna have people take their personal days then, and right now, we don't have a spring break, and I know some staff take time in January or February or March. Is there, as you've, I mean, is it hard to find subs in March because people don't have an option? Is it hard, you know what I mean? Like, is there a time where it makes it more difficult because people are still taking the time, or a time where kids are gone a lot because, I mean, I've never had a spring break, so if we go somewhere in the spring, which we have, we just pick a week because, or we pick a time because the kids are gonna miss school no matter when it is, but...
I'll be honest, I mean, we have days, and it's not just in November or March or whatever that we, whatever reason, have a tough time getting subs, you know, whether it's illness, whether it's whatever. I'm not aware of anyone not being able to get time, whether it's at deer hunting time or spring break, you know, to get a sub.
And, you know, also, when you're looking at families going on spring breaks, or going on a break sometime during the year, part of it is what kind of price you can get on tickets also. And I guarantee if everybody, if we have a week off, if we're looking at expecting families to go then, they aren't gonna be real happy that they're gonna have to fly out of the cities because obviously, our plan can't hold locally, that many people. So, if you're looking at that, so I mean, personally, if I was taking my son, which I've done... So if you're looking at that, so I mean, personally, if I was taking my son, which I've done a lot, I would not pick that week when I took him on vacation. I'm not gonna, personally.
Here's the issue, though, if you try creating a, a spring break somewhere else, the second we have to have, I mean, Good Friday is in the, in the custodial, our custodial calendar as a non-work day and, um, or a paid holiday. In the teachers group, it's a non-work day. So you could steal the 5th, that's one day. You could steal the 23rd as a second day, if you will. You could steal, I'm looking at version B, you could steal the one day in November. You can't get enough days to get a full week.
Right.
You know, that's just the problem with, part of it is, I'll be honest with you, part of it is the late start this year. You know, with starting at the 8th, you know, that push, most people don't wanna go into June. We're into June a couple of days. No one wanted to go past the 4th, you know, 'cause typically, we don't go into June. If it was another year, or just say, we started on, you know, the 1st, you know, somehow, or the 2nd or whatever, it would give a little more leeway, where you can still do some flexibility and still get out before June or by June 1st, 2nd. It's just this year is tough, um, you know, to make, make much work.
I suggest...
I'd definitely like to see the 5th, April 5th off, just because it is the Easter holiday the day before.
Which is with it on B.
I mean, do you want, do you want the 23rd move aside? You know, I mean, that's really about the only day, I mean, and again, there's...
The only, the only opinion I have on the whole calendar is I like having the 23rd off, but honestly, I don't, I don't care. It's like, it's just a personal preference, so, it seems like that's what most of it is.
I don't see why, I don't see a need to move anything on B. I mean, nobody's said anything that, unless we just wanna do it to do it, I don't know why we move anything. That looks pretty good.
Okay.
Nobody said anything, uh, they're concerned about.
B is one day.
For hunting, so Roxy doesn't get all upset.
So do we wanna, um, take our vote on B, or I'll give anybody an opportunity to suggest anything else first?
Yep. They were, so they had, they had one more vote for C. What was their second choice, was it B or A?
I, to be honest, I don't know this...
Are you thinking their third choice?
No, I think they had a version D.
Oh, I see.
I think that we didn't get, I think both of them somehow built in some type of break. I honestly can't, 'cause they didn't come back. Obviously, if they would've voted on A, B, and C, we'd have three, you know, so they just said, you know...
I'm sorry if you said that already, but I was looking at, I missed that.
So the teachers by one vote wanted C.
I'm all for...
And that puts them back to school the day after Easter, correct?
I think Ted would just...
C?
Yes.
Ted wouldn't be happy with this, Ted would...
They have a four-week.
So would Jim Shockey.
Well, we'll see, what would Ted need to do?
But yeah, I'm ready to vote.
Yeah, they would be back on, on version C, they would be back the 5th.
On the 5th, okay.
All right, are you ready to vote?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Okay, now I'll call it to vote. All those in favor of version B signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
It is carried for two. Moving on to... Uh, approve, uh, action item number three, approve wage increases for at-will employees scheduled dated March 16th, 2020. Undertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, I'll second.
I got a motion by Mike and a second by Roxanne, let's close. All right, further discussion?
Okay, if I can explain a little bit, first of all, um, thank you to the administrative committee that has put time and effort into, for the most part, it is a two and two for what I'm gonna call, which is similar to our other contracts, for all either full-time at-will people or like bus drivers that are, you know, year-round, they have a duty that's three hours, four hours, or whatever. So it's two and two, just like the other contracts. The, for the substitutes and what I'm gonna say is sporadic people, we're not going back and doing back pay for a person that worked two hours here and four hours somewhere else. So we did two and a half percent on the scale, which is a slight higher, um, from this point forward. Just kinda, and, and I'm gonna go back to like, when we increased the sub-teacher dues, or rate, we don't go back anywhere. We say from that point on, whenever we, we address it. So, um, and then it's 2% in the second year for, for those, those people. The other caveat that we need to be aware of is there was some discussion, and there is a need. We are looking at, um, the business office duties, pay, and the group is, was gonna wait on this whole thing until the group we have looking at secretarial and how things all work play out to see if we should adjust something. My recommendation was, let's do the two and two across the board, with the understanding that when we get a recommendation, that committee can bring forth whatever that change may be. And whether it's a difference that, you know, we'll, we'll vote on if we, you know, you will vote on. The other piece that's in there, if you recall, we've moved all the groups, um, that weren't there to have a vacation upfront. So everyone starts on a July 1st, and then, you know, it's through the calendar year. We have some language that needs to be adjusted with this group that pertains to vacation as well, that we will bring, you know, when that comes. But the point is, I guess I didn't feel it was fair to hold, even our sub-people, our casual people, if that's the right word. You know, to get, let's move forward, get it done. At-will policy, you can change at any time, you know, just like thing policy. So I just want that out there. We can see what the, um, get the name of the group that's...
CLA.
Yeah, CLA, you know, comes back with recommendations, and at that point, we'll pull the same group in and bring something to the board.
Kevin wasn't, yeah, I'd just add that, Kevin wasn't very, as involved in the, uh, committee, um, this time, because of, um, him having a interest, I guess, in that, you know, with your spouse, you know, with your spouse, you know. So it was mostly myself, Michelle, and Jen, and, um, we had a hard time with it, but we're, I think we're all, uh, okay with, um, the two and two and wait to see what comes back from this. Did you mention, uh, the one thing, um, we were gonna possibly maybe do something about bus drivers?
Oh, the, the other piece that's put in there, sorry, thank you. Um, if you listen to the radio or you see, I'm gonna say a competitor, um, is advertising $500 for drivers that start and are, have a current license, so they don't have to train them. So, it came to me, can we do something similar? And of course, we do pay to train. I'm gonna say roughly $300 or so a cost by the time we pay them hourly. So if someone's willing to come drive for us, I thought we should offer the same thing, at least. Well, then it came back to me, well, what about our current drivers? Why shouldn't they, you know, quit and go to Rinkies, or, you know? And so what we've done, what we came up is, we're gonna offer the same thing. Someone new comes, whether they started today, today's probably not a good example, you know, start driving when we're in session, or, you know, three months down, whenever, this will be on the table. They, if they're driving next March, and I forget what, March 20th, or whatever date we picked, they will be eligible at that time for the $500. All our current drivers that are employed now will also get back $500 stipend, all at-will, full-time people. So even business office, Tom, Mike, they're all in that. Be similar to what we've done, teachers got something, you know, administration got that same, not, not same 500, it's the same amount. Theirs was 900, but, so, we are, and it's not an ongoing deal, it's a one-time deal. And then could someone next March get the stipend and then quit and go somewhere else? They could, but at least we're trying to...
So everyone in the at-will gets the 500?
Except like, like, right now, not including, say, our, our substitute bus driver, you know, that maybe drives once, twice. Um, summer workers aren't, you know, any of the, on that one page, there's a bunch of...
So full-time, salaried or hourly, doesn't matter?
Correct.
Okay, and it doesn't matter time that they've been here or any of that?
Nope, nope.
It's just, everybody gets that now, and then if you're a bus driver, so then future, in the future, then if you're a bus driver that signs on a year later, you would be eligible.
If you come with your license. If someone comes without the license, say, for next year, and we pay to train them, they're not eligible.
Yep, yep.
And, and again, just like with the teacher group or other, yeah, there's people that have been here 30 years, and there's people that were brand-new this year. They both got that same, you know, you can argue it's not fair, it should be prorated based on years of service. It's just the way it is, it's, uh, at least it's something, you know?
Yeah, I was just trying to clarify, so is that going forward, everybody that are full-time would have something now, but going forward, it would only be the bus drivers that would get that additional after the year?
No, if they came with a license.
Right, that's what I meant.
Next year.
Next year, and, and it's a one-time pay, you know, like you say, if we hired someone today that had the license, and they kept driving on, just say it's March 20th, we picked a date, if they're still driving for us, they'll get that $500.
And then the next year, same thing?
It's a one-time.
I mean, for the next person, for the three people that start on September?
Correct, someone can start next February, come license. They only work for a month, say, they're gonna get that $500, because they came and we didn't have to invest to train.
I was just trying to understand that, originally, I thought it was a bus driver thing, and then it's a, also across the board for that well. So I was just trying to sort that out going forward to my mind, so, thank you.
Ted, is there, is there a reason the board needs to know anything about why you said we had a hard time with that?
No, um, it, I'll, I can summarize it, basically, um, the, a year ago, or a year ago, maybe? Um, uh, or when we went out for the referendum and Sue, um, retired, we didn't rehire her position. So the business office took on a lot more duties, Kevin took on some more duties, and a couple other people kinda divvied it up. But the bulk of it was on the business office, and at the time, we said, once things settled, we would look at their pay and their duties and stuff like that. And so that was, that was a little while ago now, a couple of years ago.
Well, actually, the last time the at-will policy was adjusted, there were some things adjusted. Whether it was adjusted correctly, meaning, you know, enough, there wasn't an in-depth, I think that's a fair statement.
So the struggle, without getting, uh, too deep into it, without going into a closed session, is that, um, is that we were torn between, um, giving them a bonus, giving them a slightly higher percentage, or waiting to see what the HR assessment has. And so it wasn't like we, I shouldn't say we were torn, we just didn't come up with like a perfect solution. And so this one, I think, is, it's a little bit deferred, um, but it'll, it'll kinda go to what I've been preaching about is, we'll at least have, um, we'll know, you know, how much extra they're doing for us and stuff like that. And then we can quantify it based on if their workload was 20% more, you know? I don't, I don't know what it's going, I don't know what the results are gonna be, so I don't wanna speculate. But I do know that they picked up a lot of work, and, um, and that's kinda the thought process that we went back and forth over a whole bunch of times. Okay, any other questions about it? All right, here none, we'll call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries unanimously. Approve one additional teacher in-service day for school year 2020 to 2021, I'll entertain a motion.
Make that motion. I'll second.
Roxanne and Tony?
If I can...
Further discussion?
Yep. There has been, obviously, we're into planning for next year. As far as LSI goes, we are through a two-year cycle, I think we've had some of this conversation. Um, we will continue, the two leadership teams, elementary, Missy, you can chime in if you wanna add here, um, have been meeting, elementary, high school, putting a plan together for next year. We're gonna continue to strengthen the areas that we've been instructed, that we've learned in. We're still continuing with, um, you know, student-centered instruction, um, uh, learning or teamwork in a variety of, um, material that we've learned or tweaks to our practice. We are choosing now to supplement that learning, to take it further on our own as well as reaching out to people to help, even if you will, and, because we still have a lot to improve in those areas. So with the days, we're at 174 days, student days, um, that's in contract. But the board, just like last year, last year you added a day. We're asking the board to, when I say add an in-service day, it takes a student day away. Um, we have someone, the reason I didn't put the date is, assuming the date is not gone, we're looking at with a speaker coming in on October 5th. And it's, you know, it's, it's when they're available type deal, um, to come in and work with staff.
On that side, is it...
No, no, it's, it's a, it's, again, it, it goes right with, it's not them specific, it's not going, we're not throwing that out and going, you know, 90 degrees different, it's, what's the person's name?
Um, his name is Ken Williams, he's been with Long Island School. And he is gonna come in and talk about, um, PLCs, like, and collective teacher advocacy.
Is that the cowboy hat guy?
So, I'm, I, we're behind it, and I recommend it. The only reason we didn't put the date is, and again, Missy's worked out and has a contract, but if, you know, we go back tomorrow and it has to be the 5th gone, and we need, we'll pick the day before, you know, get that in place before we publicize this, um, assuming it's approved. So that's what we're asking.
Okay. All right, I got a motion by Rox and a second by Tony, any further discussion?
So just to be, so we added one day last year, and this is an additional day in addition?
No, that day is out of the, so we're gonna be the exact same number of student days.
Okay, just making sure I understood that.
Obviously, if you count the days, we're in two now. I mean, the calendar read this year is 173, it'll be the same as next year.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Here none, we'll call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries unanimously. Action item number five, approve hire of Julie Talmage as elementary teacher at 1.0 FTE for 2020, 2021 school year. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, I'll second.
Got a motion by Mike and a second by Terry, any further discussion?
I just want to be clear, um, I was not part of the interview committee, Missy and a team of people interviewed, how many people?
Uh, seven candidates.
Seven candidates, this, this was a, was it unanimous?
It was unanimous.
Unanimous decision. She is currently a teacher and has been for quite a few years, I don't wanna quote, um, 'cause I don't remember, out at Indus. She doesn't, she has a bachelor's degree, she does not have anything past that. I called her a very good conversation, I think she would be a very, um, good asset to our group. But on the other hand, she's not willing to come at B1, so to speak. So I put it, and, and I, I respect, you know, the fact, I believe we want, you know, can we get someone cheaper out of that pool of seven? I'm sure we can, I'm just being honest with you. Um, but on the other hand, we wanna pick the best person. Um, you know, if, if she would've had a master's degree, I would not have went to a B7, there's 10 steps, you know? And I explained that to her, 'cause we'll honor credits. So I am recommending, it's not the cheapest person we could get.
So that's the equivalent of, uh, B7 means that she has a bachelor's plus seven years?
No, maybe seven steps down, still in the first call, you know? I mean, still significantly cheaper than if, and I didn't bring the pay scale with, than, you know, if she was a master's, you know, on seven step, I could go get it, it's 10, 12, 13,000 more. There are some other things I think we're gonna save on, but again, that's never a guarantee, for instance, so...
Well, a good teacher is definitely worth it, so...
Well, and the only reason I point that out is, you know, we run into this, and I'm just gonna be honest with you, and I'm guessing, well, many could probably chime in. The inequity in life, and in our profession, is we could choose and get someone out of B1. I mean, I'm just being honest. And, you know, the next person can come along, and they might not get, she has more than 10 years, you know, she's close to 20.
20, they're...
You know, and so, yeah, is it fair? Not always, but I guess some of it is a supply and demand, and who applies and what you want. And, um, I'll be honest, we've gotten several teachers that have been teaching out there that have turned out wonderful, you know? Um, and I think she can add to, step in and add to what we have. Like I say, um, it, it's different, most, and again, we're not gonna change it here in international halls, but most businesses, you want the most qualified person, the best. We won't, you know, unfortunately, in education, a lot of times, we try, you know, we do try getting the cheapest, you know, some money. And so I'm just being upfront, I think this is worth, you know? And again, just from what I've read and trusting the expertise of the group that interviewed, it's worth, you know?
Okay, any further discussion? All right, I got a motion by Mike and a second by Terry. All right, I got a motion by Mike and a second by Terry. Though here any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries unanimously. Action item number six, approve wage increase for technology director per contract, I'll entertain a motion.
It's almost. Second.
A motion by Tony and a second by Roxanne, any further discussion?
This is the same two and two, the same pieces that were put in the act will are put in this one. And so, and again, it goes back to why is this not in the act will? Well, it was saying when Dave Skorok was here, he was out kind of on his own, and it was just a separate contract, so when we hired the person in there now.
It is the same way.
Yeah, the same, so it goes right along, so I obviously support it.
Any further discussion? Here none, we'll call it to a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries unanimously. All right, moving on to administrative reports, Melissa Day, elementary principal.
I don't have numbers for you, we were not going to spend today, and Missy can answer that for you, but, and to say that we just have had to cancel a lot of events coming up, we have our book fair coming in, our MCA PFS, those with dads, all of those things obviously have been canceled in light of COVID-19. We did just, we did our preschool registrations and conferences, so they were well-attended, I feel like. And yeah, and our school leadership team continues to meet, and like Kevin said, and we're focusing on learning target, student teaming, and close reads over the next year, and then next year, we hope to approach PDT and continue to use PDT to fund our leadership team, having each of our teachers come into other leadership team members' classrooms so that they can kind of get a feel for what we're doing and what we need them to buy into. We thought that would be less intimidating than the way, than the style that we did this year. This year, when you went on a C four I day, like with Sue, you would go into somebody's classroom and then you, they would come in and you would kind of give them tips or suggestions, but we thought better and less intimidating for them to go into a leadership team's classroom, who's already been piloting and trying these things, so that they could take ideas on their own from that. So we're excited, we've had two new, or three new members have joined the leadership team, I think because they've seen the work that we're doing, and they were excited, and that was Katie Winkles joined, Molly Pavil has joined, and Brittany Eldine has joined. So now we have our representative from each grade except for preschool and fifth grade, but still representative, representative from each two come team, so. But, yeah, I guess, and we'll just see where the next days take us, yeah, I mean, we don't know, it's like an unsure time. Kids are scared, kids are sad that they aren't coming back to school, kids are sad that book fairs are canceled, those are big deals to kids, so, you know, but one day at a time, and hopefully can lead everybody through it.
Thank you, does anybody have anything for Tony?
No.
Okay.
And it would be a similar deal, the team has been meeting.
You've canceled everything.
Yeah, and so, am I okay too?
Yep.
Okay, first of all, in no specific order, just so you're aware, the FES boiler air quality or air exchange bid is out. It'll be in the paper starting Wednesday and Saturday, a fairly short turnaround. They have emailed it out to forty-one, I believe the word was contractors, forty-one different groups. Technically, we have to post locally, we're gonna see, there's actually a mandatory walkthrough on Wednesday. We're gonna see what we get, we can do it other times too, it just depends on how quick people pick up on it. But that is part of, the requirement is, if you're gonna bid this, you gotta come look at the job in person, which is not uncommon, so that someone doesn't throw something in and be run into a, well, I didn't know about that, even though it might be in the drawing or not. So I'll keep you abreast, the reason I say that, and I guess, just to kind of give you a heads up, is I believe the closure, just gotta look on my calendar here, is assuming everything goes smoothly the twenty-fourth, is that right? And so I would like to at least discuss with, again, obviously, we're not gonna be in session, but with the twenty-sixth or twenty-seven, assuming everything goes well, and we want to bring a recommendation for, could we hold, and again, we can hold this meeting at any time, I just need to get it posted, you know, tentatively, we can.
Are you saying March twenty-fourth?
Yep, March twenty-fourth, so in essence, a week from tomorrow is when it closes. I would like a day or two, you know, for us to obviously look through, talk with people we may have to talk with, to either, you know, accept or reject all, you know what I'm saying, type deal. But it is important if there is, let's say, one, we say this is good, prices came in good, that we prove as soon as possible, because there's things that have twelve weeks or more clean time to order. So I'm just asking, would anyone have, like Thursday, that Thursday or Friday, and again, I say Friday, because it doesn't have to be a five o'clock meeting, it can be a morning, it can be a noon.
March twenty-fourth is on Tuesday.
Correct, but we want a day or two, that's when it closes. So I want a day to work with, if it has to be the engineer or another outside source, to look at things, Tom, myself, and whoever, to bring forth a recommendation.
Yep.
So I'm just tentatively, does anyone have a preference that Thursday or Friday to?
So I have on Thursday, there's supposed to be a long rotary planning session, which would affect a couple of us, but honestly, that's not happening, so I think any day is fine with me.
And again, we can do whatever time of day works for, you know, obviously Jen has a schedule, Rox does.
Changing every day too, so.
Yeah, I would imagine.
So I, whatever we set, I'll make work, I can work.
Well, you may, and you're saying the twenty-sixth or the twenty-seven?
Either one would be fine, and for the most.
I prefer the twenty-sixth.
Okay, for the most part, unless I'm missing something, it should be a fairly short, you know, we had three bidders, here's what we see is the difference, our recommendation is version A at three point two million dollars, you know, I'm sure whoever we recommend would probably be here in case there are some questions, but. So if the twenty-sixth works, is there a preferred time? I mean, like I say, we can do a noon, eleven, one, we can do a four, five, you guys?
Actually, I have a preferred time?
I am open.
I think I can make anything right now, there's so much fluidity in our schedule. We will not be seeing outpatient next week, and so everything else I can schedule around it, so whatever works for everybody else.
Four?
Four?
Sure.
Yeah, so we will set, set and put it out there, I will keep you in the loop as we go through, so March twenty-sixth?
Thursday, four p.m.
Four, four p.m. Okay, the next two things, and I would like to, I would like to have some conversation in your packet, there's not formal action, but I thank Jen for her work, because she did the majority, there's some documents in here with respect to putting together a community forum, getting notification out, there's some sample letters from MSBA. She took and typed the main categories out, and again, there could be things added. We're not quite under the timer much now, because we're gonna postpone until further notice, but I guess my thought, and that's all it is, is a thought, is I would like the board, and Ted can take the action or what, to give it to a subgroup, obviously, I can be involved as much as I can, to go through, analyze what's here, see if we can get, I gave you, and again, it was just the last sheet, is what I had originally discussed or thought of as, again, let a subgroup run with this.
So, yeah, so the subgroup's main purpose would not be to come up with any goals, it's to come up with the process of the goals. So with that being said, my thought was that Jen and I, we went to the school board training, that is basically what she's basing this off of, so I'd like to put herself and myself on a committee, but that does leave one open spot to a school board member that has some time to put towards it. I don't have a preference, you guys would all be great, so I don't know if anybody at this point wants to express interest. We can do it with two also, I already said you.
I know, I have a question, so you said we're gonna be setting the process towards goals, so what?
Basically, during.
What I wrote up was just an assessment of how we would just get, it's just community forum, it's just public, just getting public information, I'm assuming there would also be staff information, other stuff, do you think that whole big picture, is that what you're thinking?
The whole big picture would be part of this committee, coming up with, coming up with the goals, and we'll do our best of not leading the goals too, unless that's what the group wants.
And I think, at least my thought is, whether we can, just say in the next month, just say this was going forward, get the letters finalized, you know, again, it's not going forward, so all we have to do is change the date. Let's, you know, finalize how we would present, how we, you know, get the whole plan put together. Again, looking at those, I'll just be honest, looking at, I don't know if you call these categories, one thing I would like to go through, there's a few things I don't quite understand in here, and if we don't understand them, if someone says we value that, I want to, you know, maybe we gotta tweak words. An example, and again, for some places, it would make a lot of sense, it said, we va, you know, just say we're saying, these are things we value, or things we think the school should value more, it says small school size. And maybe that is appropriate, I mean, I, we have a, is that?
Say in it?
Yeah, small class size, I can defend, so I, I'm just thinking we should look at these and either, A, at least be able to convey what we think, I mean, you know, there's a lot under there, we don't want to define everything. Or is there anything else, you know, geez, I had this idea over the last week, and I don't know where that would fit in. But maybe that's the other category, or maybe, so I just think that group works on finalizing, getting, like I say, the exact questions that we would throw out, going back to the, you know, letter, if we were moving forward for April sixth, what special invite could we use, what could we put out on Facebook or on our webpage, you know? Let's get it all ready to go, so if it's May or June.
So for.
I'll be happy to be on it.
Any, so just out of fairness, any other board members interested? Okay, that works out good then, then we don't have to pick, so. The other, I guess, discussion we should have about it is, you'll be involved with it, Kevin, do we, do we want anybody else involved? Or is it fine with us four, or do we want to get principals or business, like any, I don't know.
I think we should work to figure out how we want to, like you say, whether it's, again, things have changed right now, we'll see how things go down the road, whether we'd be eating an early out with staff, for instance, and doing some type of similar, we talked about even like a test run possibly on staff to run the process. Again, developing, I'm gonna say Survey Monkey, you know, putting this in, again, staff could have that option, just like anyone else. And again, it can go, my only concern, I don't want to say concern, is thought, is somehow we have to think a little bit about, when I look at this, I think there's things I may answer differently, I shouldn't say differently as a staff member, but, you know, would I do, I value high-quality teachers, how do I not? You know what I'm saying, that we might want results separated, you know what I'm saying, knowing that this came, it doesn't say Kevin said this, but this came from our teachers, this came from public sector, you know, I, and again, it's just ideas, you know, because what I mentioned, I think it was to Jen, I could be wrong, but, say we did all our staff, just, and I'm just picking on teaching staff, roughly seventy teachers. If we had seventy community members in two forums, eighty, you know, it's about a fifty-fifty split, does that, you know, how does that work? You know, does one group outweigh the others, or say we didn't get as much community, you know, the forums didn't go over well, and we only have forty people, if you just conglomerate it all together, it might be worth, so again.
That's what we'll figure out, I suppose.
Yeah, and that.
Okay, so.
And so, I just want to clarify, we're just, because again, we're having a committee to figure out how we're gathering input, or a committee on figuring out how this board is gonna establish their goals, because that feels too different.
Gathering, gathering input through this form process and survey.
We'll all establish our goals together.
That's, but I just want to make sure, because I would want everybody's input on that.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
So now that, what?
I have, I have more.
I was gonna make an emotion to make that a committee.
You can appoint committees, you don't need to.
Yeah, but they need to be approved by the board, right, is that not correct? If you're saying so, I believe you, but.
I, like, I think technically you can just appoint.
Well, then that's what I did. If we're, if we're wrong, we'll appoint it next time.
Yeah, I've been wrong, but I think you have the right just to appoint. The next thing I have is, is obviously the front and center topic, the COVID-19, and obviously, since I came up here an hour ago, I'm sure there's twenty more emails and different information.
They're just from these new guidance right now.
What's that?
From the governor was speaking at five, yeah.
Well, there was a four-thirty webinar update from MDE, but anyway, I guess I want to let you know where we're at, so to speak. Obviously, the governor closed school effective Wednesday across the state. We did have a case where an individual working in this building went in Friday, I'll be a little careful, went in Friday, was not feeling well, felt it was his diligence, A, not only to stay home, because that's what we're recommending for anyone that has cold, flu, whatever symptoms. Due to the circumstance, the person had traveled out of state, had come back recently, they tested him for strep and whatever else they all test for to try and rule things out. And then my understanding is, if they are gonna do the COVID-19 test, they need permission from the CDC. They saw enough or felt enough that it was worth, whether it's because he works in a school, or he's around enough people, you know, I can't answer that. But since they did the test, he is self-quarantined, family is self-quarantined, that is why the decision had happened Friday, you know, and so, decision was, you know, no symptom, yeah, no symptom, doesn't have a fever, isn't coughing, you know, some of the typical signs, doesn't mean he is or isn't. So we did do a thorough cleaning of the area, we actually, they cleaned up here knowing, we had a meeting, wiped everything down the best they could, and we'll do more as time goes on, but the choice was to close today. And then the choice was, you know what, we might as well stay closed Tuesday and start working on our plan. That said, we will get plans going by Wednesday, because that's the requirement by law for childcare for emergency workers twelve and under, and there's a definition of who meets that criteria. Teachers are included, because they're required to come get this plan put together, normally, they probably wouldn't be included. We also need to have food service for that group. Now, keep in mind, when we say childcare, it could be kids that are not necessarily, you know, it's kids in our area. It could be kids that go to St. Thomas, it could be kids that are still at home. I think there is a restriction, again, there's all kinds of guidelines.
Kevin, is there a guideline, or is there an exact description of what group of parents can take advantage of it?
Yes, there, there is, and that's why I say, for the most part, I'm gonna define it as medical, emergency responders, fire, paramedics. I think it even went into maybe the judge, or, you know, law enforcement, some of the things. Yeah, there, it lists quite.
Are they saying day and night?
No, it's within, no, it's within, but the governor and MDE and MDH has asked for us to work as much as we can. And I met with the union leaders earlier this afternoon, they would like, you know, just say healthcare, and I don't know if they work ten-hour shifts or not, if we can be flexible and meet the demands, they want us to. And, excuse me, and I think our staff will, you know, and when I say staff, it could be parents, it could be teachers, it could be whomever we, you know, we're all, I don't want to say licensed childcare people, because we're not, but we have background checks we've passed, so there will be a group tomorrow that takes this piece of it. Missy has, I want to say people assigned, or will have people assigned, that are gonna figure out, A, we're gonna put a message out right away tomorrow morning with a email contact that's specific for registering for childcare, or a telephone number to call, because we will need to know who, you know, and I guess how many could have more than one kid. We have to offer transportation if they desire, we need to know, you know, what's your timeframe? You need us at seven-thirty, you need us to go to five, five-thirty, and we'll work it out. We need to provide food service for that group, so we need some information, are there any food allergies, anything like that? So that has to be going Wednesday, and of course.
Kevin, but there's something missing, I, I don't get how, if you have healthcare workers, healthcare workers work twenty-four-sevens.
Correct, but the, my understanding is, the expectation is, typically, they might have been here normally, or they would have possibly had care normally, but be us closing, be maybe daycares, being sick, whatever, they, they need to make sure that these emergency people can keep working where they need to work. I can't answer all, yeah, I'm just being honest with you. I can't answer all of, yeah, I'm just being honest with you.
Right, but you, you do understand what I'm asking is that you're gonna help the day healthcare workers, but not the night healthcare workers, and yet it's a 24 thing. I just am curious, that's all, how.
Is it because we're respons- because our responsibility was to take care of them during the school?
Probably, you know, some.
During school hours. Replace the school days.
Kind of, but I mean, yeah. And, and I'll be honest, and I threw it at the group today. If people come with the need, I'm not saying we couldn't do longer. You know, it's, it's, I, it's just gonna be tough to force, but again, I think the group is willing, will be willing to try doing whatever we can. There are some other groups that have reached out, I'm just being honest, some church groups and this and that. If there's something we can help with, you know, and again, there's a little different, I can't say there are, but we're gonna see what we can do, we have to offer and be as flexible. The other piece that we have to have in place, like I said, is the food service. And a different group will take and run with that, the same, the same type way. We already have an, uh, email set up directly for that. Also a phone number, it's gonna be a secretary in this building, if they wanna use phone. We're gonna offer it to all, okay?
All students?
All students, any family in need, at least to start with, under the auspice that it runs just like school lunch. If you're free and reduced, that'll get put in the system and obviously it'll be, you know, free. If, if I'm gonna use myself, if we wanted for our daughter, we'll work that out. It would go in the account and we would pay. There's a possibility, and again, I'm just throwing it out there, that we may get accepted into like the summer food service as that gets, there's some stuff, if that's the case, it's 18 and under free, I agree, qualify. So at starting out, again, we have to have it in place, we're gonna put it in place with the understanding that we will deliver. That's where our transportation, pairs may be involved, whomever, maybe food service. Everyone needs to, you know, we're gonna be doing different things that normal people didn't normally do. We'll probably have some pickup sites, again, we're gonna know, you gotta register to get this. We, we, again, just brainstorming, this group will take and run, maybe a spot in South Falls, take a bus or whatever, and, you know, a certain group designate that spot, or maybe down by Bacchus or somewhere. Because there's some people, and I'm just saying especially older, that might not be able to say, we're gonna be at this address every day. Like it or not, people are gonna move around, but if there's a place, they're gonna have to pick where they want to either deliver or to get it, at least not a weekly basis, okay? We can't be doing a different, you know, call in every morning and let us know where, we need to get some routes. So that'll get going. And then the rest of the group will be working on this distance learning plan. And, um, again, we have a survey going, I'm not gonna say we're ahead of the curve. We started to collect information last Friday. The students in the high school took a survey, asking, you know, how many had computer at home, how many had internet access. It was a four-question survey. We got that from the kids that were here last Friday, it's being tallied, it was being tallied today. So part of the task is gonna be the kids that didn't get to put info in, we're gonna have to start making calls, cause we wanna know who has, we're gonna have, be able to deploy, you know.
I saw Katie Winkle had that same thing.
Okay, yeah, and, and elementary is gonna take off, you know, developing, again, when I say their plan, and when we say their plan. Pre-K, 1, might be different than 2 or 3. And there needs to be daily contact, daily attendance. And again, how we do that, I can't answer that right now. Some may be online, some may be using a phone. We're gonna have a group, most likely, I'm not gonna speak for both buildings, but maybe that starts looking at technology, you know, like Zoom and different things. Maybe doing some education for the staff in the next few days. You know, if, hey, looks like, you know, 24 out of 26 of my kids have internet access, got computer, or we can get them a computer, they'd be a good example to do some, either taping of lessons, putting them out, or doing Zoom answer sessions, or whatever. It's gonna, there's a lot to figure out, just to be honest, in the next week and a half. My gut is, as this week goes by, I'm guessing early next week, we will know if we're coming back on the 30th. You know, if, if cases keep going up, I'm sure we're gonna be out on the 30th, at least that's my gut. If they were to peak and start going down tomorrow and we have a week or a week and a half of going, I don't know. Maybe they'll keep us out another week or so, you know, or, but I think until plateau's or, you know, my gut, I could be wrong. Maybe they want it to be higher, but they want us to be in place, you know, and I'm saying before they would go to distance learning. But we need to have, again, there's special ed, we have to, they do a lot to provide those services, 504, TITO, we're gonna have counseling, you know, try offering what we can, is it gonna be the same? Not at all. But I think I'm confident, like the governor, that we can get something in place and it'll be as good as we can.
As far as the food delivery, we talked about essential staff type. And also, that includes low-income people can come in and eat also?
Yeah, well, not, not come in, we're gonna deliver to them. And, and my gut, and again, I've been in contact with our food director. I mean, most likely it's gonna be a mid-morning delivery, at least what we're looking at, of a cold lunch. You know, sandwich, apple, whatever they can come up with. And most likely, we would then have a cold cereal, milk.
Breakfast for next.
Breakfast in for the next day, at least that's, you know, that's the plan. And then they too, you know, and so on, they're gonna try and get some variety, you know, this and that. But it's hard to do something hot, I mean, cause at first half. And again, they'll be creative, you know, depending on how long and, you know, if the weather goes really nice, maybe there's something to spice things up, they can grill hot dogs somewhere. You know, I mean, if we, if we go that long enough, who knows what the options are. But everything has to be looked at, we don't have all the answers, I'll be honest with you. Even like with staff, we're figuring out, you know, staff is, will be paid, you know, during this time period, whether they completely work or don't. But there are still some questions on, you know, what, what happens if I call in and I say, I can't come because I'm vulnerable for X, Y's. I don't have an answer, everyone meets the criteria and not, obviously, right now, I'm saying make the call, do what you need to. We'll sort that out over the days to come. You know, pregnant females, right now, stay home. You know, I believe that qualifies in there. We have an individual that has diabetes and has for years, I think that's a high risk with, with this. It doesn't mean we can't have them help us, it's figuring out how they can help us. If we get to the distance learning, I'm not saying everyone's gonna have to be here necessarily every day. Maybe some of them can do it from home or other places. You know, that's part of figuring out, we're to include pairs, you know, just like pairs are involved in learning on a daily basis. How can they get into this plan? And, you know, maybe the teacher teaches the lesson, you know, whatever. And then maybe they have to do some calls or do some stuff to, you know, help a group that, hey, is reaching out, having problems. Let me ask, we, we talked again with the leadership today, you know, I'm just thinking, you know, like with younger kids, you know, older, probably gonna be available most of the day. But I mean, how would they get in contact with our first grader? When Stacy and I are working, you know, depending on how it is, maybe some are gonna do some later hours and try making contacts at night. Maybe they can do FaceTimes with a chunk of their class. We're gonna see.
Nothing's gonna be perfect.
Well, no, but.
The childcare piece, that teachers were included in that? Does that include all staff, or like with pairs and everything, or is it just the teachers?
No, no, all, all school staff will be included, you know. But again, you gotta keep in mind, and I'm not saying it's fair, but if we open it to everyone, we might as well just have school in session, and that's why they limit it, I think, is, you know.
There's guidance on that.
Yeah. What's that?
There's guidance on other characters. You need to read the guidance.
You're saying I'm wrong on who's included?
No, the teachers are included, but the born after-school care suspended for anybody other than what meets the criteria.
Correct, but what I'm saying is we just opened it up to, and I'm using you as an example. You know, your kids don't qualify, you know, for, to come to, and I don't know what age they are, but I, I'm just saying if they were in the age, they don't qualify. You know, or, you know, Terry, you know, if your son was younger, you weren't, you know, qualified. Well, unless from your former position, I don't know.
I was just thinking, there was some pairs asking, like if they're supposed to be at school, did they qualify for that? It says educators, so we have to take, what does that mean?
I'm saying from my understanding, because they're saying we need everyone, cause like I say, if we get into distance learning, they're expected to be part of it, you know, a bus, like I say, we're gonna have bus drivers possibly working different hours than they normally would have, the ones that can, because if we're delivering during the day, different things, packets. We can't force them, you know, some of them work other jobs, but the ones that can, you know, it's gonna change.
You're saying all staff will be paid?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Are we gonna still get all our funding?
That is what we're being told, is that, and, and again, how it works, you know, like I say, we'll put the food service, there's a little bit, the good tweak there. But yeah, supposedly, we're not, we're gonna get all our ADM and go for it. The piece that's not 100% clear is, like I say, people that say don't have leave and can't come in because they're sick. Technically, they're still gonna be paid, you know, is there an inequity where if I'm sick, I gotta use my sick day? It is what it is. Until we know better, I would rather people, you know, make their own choice. If there's someone that the group, myself or administration thinks is abusing, we're gonna have to, you know, question. You know, I hope that's not the case. But, you know, long-term, if this goes long-term, we need everyone to do whatever their job is, so to speak. And again, I'll be very, I'll be honest, I had a call from local 510, the union representative on Friday, very supportive, wanted me to know that, you know, they understand there's gonna be people doing some work, you know, that maybe would be looked at as their work, but as long as their people are involved, they're fine. You know, we're not gonna, if we run out of work, hey, pairs start painting, painting the library. You know, but we're gonna clean, we're gonna start tomorrow, clean all the remedicals, all the preschool stuff, everything. I mean, I don't know if they'll get to the point of wiping every book off in here, you know, I mean.
So I'm also assuming then if school, because of Hola, this last, school could continue into June, possibly.
That's completely up to the governor.
But what I say on that is, we'll also be paid for that. That's extra money, that's not in the budget.
Either, either, I think, well, I think, again.
And that'd be a concern too, I mean, all that money's a big deal.
My gut right now is, they're giving this, I'm gonna say a week and a half, we had two extra days, to get this ready, be ready to go, so that assuming we go that route, they don't have to extend and go longer.
Good.
I mean, that's my gut, I'm not gonna make a promise, cause I don't have the crystal ball.
You know, I would, I would say about that is, uh, the rainy day fund that, um, that the state has, they're planning on using a lot of that for this, they're saving some because of flooding, but I know that that's a big part of where, where the extra money is coming for some of this stuff. And not just school stuff, like unemployment stuff and all that. Jen, did you have something?
Um, for, is there something on the governor's plan, or is there something that we've considered yet or will consider about like, you know, how many kids are in a room, how people come and go? If I'm distributing food, you know, or we're educating the bus drivers, that if you're going up to somebody's home, and if you're going from home to home to home, that we're not, they're taking, being taken care of by grandparents, that we're making sure we're doing, you know, proper cleaning in between, touching different doors and homes, and you know what I mean, like the buses, those types of.
There's guidance, and again, I'll be honest, I have not read through everything, and there's guidance from just about every group. There, most of it's very simple, you know, type deal, but I guess the way, the way I see it, you know, like for the childcare, plan is to have four to six kids. We're not gonna say we get 40 kids, we're not putting all 40 in the same room. We'll probably group them by age levels or somehow, again, that group, they'll figure that out, but we're gonna have small groups, probably keep them in various areas, not saying they're not gonna use the gym, and maybe use a classroom or two, obviously, if it gets nice enough, we can do some stuff outside. As far as food delivery, my gut, and I just heard from some places that have done it, like say we do a pickup at a, you know, using a bus at a certain site, they'll encourage, you know, we'll encourage, don't everyone order the bus at once? You know, stay spread out, you know, I see delivering to home, we set it on the front step, you know, honk whatever. Yeah, you know, type deal, so that we don't really have to have much contact. Will they be wearing gloves, you know, food service, what, when they're preparing meal, you know? I don't know, when you deliver, maybe you gotta do the same thing, I'm not up.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we're thinking of, cause you know, if, if you're not used to that kinda job, you need to be knowing what you should be doing, and of course, it's even heightened now, how to do it, so.
So I, I mean, like I say, I'm gonna be confident, and I think we have to let the different groups, obviously, Missy being administrator, her building, myself, Mr. Beverson. You know, we'll all oversee things, but we have to let like a transportation group run with the transportation, figure it out if they run into problems, or if we, we'll, we'll work together. Food service group will, you know, do the same thing. Carla will be involved, as well as the cooks, they can figure out, you know, are they gonna use both kitchens? I, probably not starting out which one, I don't know, or whatever. But they'll, they'll figure it out, they'll have to work with transportation, you know, and it's gonna be, uh, and I'm guessing it'll grow over time, you know, the childcare, if this goes on a long time, food serve, you know, the demand's probably gonna go up over time, so.
Will there be, again, restrictions on kids who come for, that are sick?
Well, my gut, and again, we have vacant, the school nurse will be involved. I would think, cause they recommend, I think they call health checks, you know, the kids come, we'll probably do a temperature. I, I haven't gotten the answer yet, someone thought, I don't know if we do or not, I guess there's a, you call it where you point it, that reads your temperature. I don't know if we have one of those or not, but they recommend possibly even for, you know, staff coming that, you know, if there's any question, it's our duty, you know, that if I'm hot up to par, then we don't wanna take any chances. The same with those workers, the same would be with the kids coming, unfortunate as that is, you know, they're sick. We're gonna have to, we can't let everyone else get sick, you know, so.
And, um, if, if and when there's any more cases, that'll, the Department of Health will connect with you then?
Well, what happens, I can make it clear, the way it was explained to me, and again, unless I interpret something wrong, you know, the recommendation, like I said, was to do a cleaning, and then we get back to, if a positive referral came out, they will be in and do what they call an investigation to figure out technically who, would the person have contact? Or even if they had contact, was it enough? You know, just for instance, if, if I tested positive tomorrow, most likely, in this situation, Rox probably doesn't have much to worry about. We did meet my office earlier today, you know, so I mean, but what I'm getting at, that's what they look at, and they will say, you, you, you. They will then recommend we do a thorough cleaning of any area, and then business will be back to usual. And, and different ones we're talking, we could get to a point, I hope we don't, but realistically, where we start, you know what? Elementary's gotta be shut down for a day, we have a positive, you know, just say we're doing district learning, distance learning and a staff member, again, all hands on board cleaning over there, we're back working the next day. You know, some people don't like to hear that. But, you know, they're saying right now, just because I was in the cities and I don't have any symptoms, a lot of people wanna say I should be home for 14 days. That's not the recommendation, even if I fallen on a plane right now, you know, unless I have symptoms. And again, I understand everyone has different, you know, is it tolerance levels or, you know, concerns? And I, I don't know how to, other than trying to be open and listen, that we also have a big project ahead of us.
Right.
And we need, this isn't something, this isn't something Missy and I, business office, whoever, can all put together. You know, I mean, we could put something together, but that's the reason the governor did, is what works for Minneapolis might not work for High Falls, might not work for, you know, so I think there's a lot, like I said, there's a lot that's gonna come. My plan, a lot of things are updates, obviously tomorrow with the food service and, um, health, or the, I wanna say health or childcare piece, we're gonna do an all-call, just saying, look for information on the website with this, you know, post or whatever, maybe we'll have the information, it's most part ready to go. But then, as things start going, we're gonna probably open the building up, and just, again, there's gonna be a group that figures this out, probably Wednesday, for people to come in in an orderly fashion if they want. You know, hey, I left my cell phone in my locker. And then there's people that have things in their lockers, there's some kids that obviously, not, I mean, I want them to grab their books and stuff if they're here. There's a couple kids that want their, already called wanting their band instruments, you know, which, no, that's a good deal. We want kids, right? So we're gonna have to, you know, in the near future, and we also want to get things out of lockers, meaning if there's an old sandwich in there, you know, after a week or so, we're gonna have, you know.
Big time.
Well, so anyway, again, we will take care of all that, you know, post, not everything's gonna be an all-call. I just want to hear where, you know, um, there is a site, you know, the website will keep updating and.
Facebook.
Facebook and whatever we can, so, so.
So I, with that, um, I just would like to add from like the school board side of stuff. Um, being the board chair, I found out maybe things five minutes before the public did, right? So for all misinformation and everything that's out there about the coronavirus, just make sure you're getting it from the source. The Facebook page from ISD three sixty-one or the journal, I think, has been pretty accurate so far. I think, uh, you've probably been talking to them regularly, it sounds like. So just make sure you're getting the, the sources, and, um, your friend on Facebook is not a source unless they're sharing it, um, from a source, right? So then the last thing I'd like to add, um, and this is just from a, a board chair standpoint, is this has been the least stressful that this possibly could have been because of the staff that we have right now. And I know we don't have all the details of how that's all gonna work out, they're gonna work out on Tuesday. But, I mean, they, they're doing everything right so far, and it's just going as smoothly as you can in a pandemic. So I'm very proud of our ISD three sixty-one leadership, and tomorrow, I'm sure I'll be just as proud of all the staff that returns. And the janitors for cleaning everything today so that they can come back. It's all pretty shit appreciated. Yeah, oh yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of stuff that's gonna be happening, and so we're really rallying, and I think that this is a great opportunity, um, to really help the community out in this crazy time. All right, any other discussion on the COVID nineteen?
If you have the community come in to get things out of lockers, if we can reinforce that, if somebody's sick to send a reliable other person or the janitor can open it up, you know, so.
Correct.
Those types of things, so that people don't feel like they need to, or maybe, hey, I'm sick this week, can I come next week? You know, or something so that we keep, we really keep sick people away from the buildings as possible.
And again, the union group that met today, and then there's representatives from all the unions, teachers, paras, uh, five-ten, um, except the principal group. Those two could not be there, but they all understood that we'll have a group, I don't think a big group, but a couple people that can figure out, do we wanna go? You know, they were talking maybe stagger, you know, A through D, you know, for these two hours. You know, we can have a building, but, you know, and try and stagger it so we don't, you know, say from five to seven tonight, everyone come get everything, because we'll have four hundred people. So they're gonna figure it out, and I'm gonna trust they're gonna do a good job, and we will, like I say, it's not gonna be tomorrow. They'll work on it tomorrow, but then either Wednesday or Thursday probably, hey, try and follow the schedule again, you have, people are sick.
They're only coming for the essentials, like, if they don't need textbooks, then.
Well, but we're gonna ask though, that if they have stuff in their locker, such as textbook, we recommend they take it. You know, if people can't get in, we may end up delivering that stuff someday. You know, but at least now I would recommend, you know, again, if you can come in and, and take what you can, you know.
Well, it would be nice if you're going to start getting that advertising out for people to do that, to just include, like Jen said. This may be a statement saying, if you're sick, don't, you know, have.
We can accommodate down the road. And again, um, this boat will be involved with the band instruments, you know, 'cause again, I don't want, I'm just gonna use as an example, Ted going in there and grabbing an instrument. I don't know if it's his, she has a pretty good idea, you know, she can always, not that.
I would've known, so.
You know, so, anyway, thank you, we'll keep you in the.
It's a clarinet, I know that much. All right, um, well, moving on to committee reports, I imagine the community advisory board, uh, they, that, that report is, everything's canceled?
But I don't have.
That's what he posted, yep.
Yeah, uh, recreation commission, um, before, everything was canceled, did we get that finalized for Tony then?
Um, I really don't know, I didn't make the last meeting.
I have one more thing, and I don't need action on this. Obviously, most things have been canceled or postponed, for instance, prom, sports, post-poll.
We never did, yeah, we never did, yeah.
Things will change, you know, the whole full a month, two months, whatever, we can reschedule and pull whatever we can off. Maybe it's a different DJ, we'll deal with it as it comes up. The one question that came up, and, and I feel, I don't have an answer, the skating this weekend is done, you know, the, um, figure skating show. They had a question, would the board be willing to hold the ice a week or two to see if things change? And I'm just, I said, I'll be honest, I doubt, but I would've asked, I, I'm, just hear me out here. To keep that arena running for two weeks with nothing going on in there is substantial money. You know, normally, I would run next, you know, this week. I mean, I'm just asking, I mean, my recommendation is to pull the pin, and, you know, I'm just being honest. I did talk to them, is there a wing week, do something this summer with some ice, not, not saying every kid participates. They're open to that, you know, if, unfortunately, you know, if two weeks down the road now, we're back in session. But like I say, it's, it's additional, well, you know what I'm saying, I just, I don't think.
How much does it cost to, like, there in the summertime, um, we put ice in, no, we always put ice in at some point in the summertime? I'm, I'm never been so familiar with that, so.
They have two weeks of ice time.
So we could make it potentially three weeks or?
Well, or my gut is, they would, they would do the sat, you know, normally, they do a Monday through Friday.
Yeah.
Maybe, you know, maybe, um, how would I say it? They, maybe we extend it a Monday or Tuesday into the next week. 'Cause what I'm getting at is they decorate the ice and do, so maybe they can't have practice, you know, or use it technically that Friday. You know, they need to, Thursday, maybe we'd extend a day or two, you know, again, comp.
So I think that that's the way to do it, is do it in the summertime, because who knows in a week? You know, honestly, it's very unlikely anything's gonna ramp down.
I guess my thought is, even if we don't, you know, even if we come back to school, there's still gonna be the recommendations probably of not having a thousand people shoulder to shoulder. You know, not to say they couldn't, you know, no guests, televise it, but I just think it's a, it's a long shot to leave, I'm gonna say, that running for two weeks.
Yeah.
Is probably, um.
On a gamble, it probably almost certainly won't pay out.
Yeah, so unless someone directs me differently, I'm gonna.
I try to accommodate them in the summertime.
And I have no issue, and I already talked to that, and unfortunately, there may be a skater or two that doesn't go to spare camp, but at least they somewhat, they can use their costumes and everything. You know, like she said, few reviews and they'll be back at it, they might not be as tuned as they are now, but, so unless someone direly thinks we should go a different route, um, you know, okay, sorry, I.
No, that's perfectly fine, so you guys decided that we didn't, yeah.
Yeah, the CDC said nothing greater than twenty-five people for eight weeks, right?
Well, that's what they're, they're saying, and again, we need.
I thought it said ten also.
But again, now we're, um, and I did, I think I said this or talked, maybe I didn't earlier, again, the recommendation, again, we talked about this prior to this weekend. Even coming out, the Department of Health, the Assistant Commissioner, or it's not Assistant, Deputy Commissioner, um, was talking that there's certain things we do our best. You know, even though the recommendation is, you know, nothing over ten, obviously, if you're in school tomorrow, they would transport kids tomorrow. You have forty kids on the bus shoulder to shoulder, we can't help that right now. But if we have the opportunity, so, and I've sent a couple emails, 'cause several staff had go, had went, how are we meeting in the gym tomorrow? That's a group of a hundred and, just say forty, fifty.
Pretty spread out.
Well, we have both sides of the bleachers pulled out, and we are gonna spread it as far apart as we can, and we're gonna do the best we can. If we were in session tomorrow, we would still be eating in the, you know, spread out. So we're gonna do the best we can, we'll keep it as short as we can. There are, you know, some people that aren't coming, um, they, they understand that right now, but it's more of, you know, just like this. And we, we probably should even spread out a little more, we could've, why, why not? You know, um, and do what we can, unless the teachers and the groups go to meet, do what we can. We might have to have twelve at a room, you know, for some reason, but be as spread out as you can. And so, and again, that's, that's where we're at, it's, it's guidelines, it's good practice. Um, you know, could we do some Zoom thing or something? It's possible, but we're not ready yet, and we need to get people going, so we, instead of trying to do the same thing, the same groups of, well, under ten, we'll spend all day tomorrow trying to talk with every group and we'll get through everyone, you know, and, or, so, we're going. I do have a student council.
We're doing our best. Oh, okay.
Um, Ella couldn't make it, she said on March fifth, for Dr. Seuss Week, student council, five students go to FES to read to the preschool classes. Student council was planning on hosting our own March Madness tournament on the nineteenth, but that has been canceled. And did, in addition to that, the state conference for all student councils has been canceled. As of now, we are still planning on helping at the elementary book fair on March twenty-sixth. So at the end of March, we will go to the northeastern division meeting where we plan to have one member run for a position on the board. See if it happens. We'll also be, um, helping run the spotlights at the ice show. Finally, on April second, we will be assisting ECFE with the Easter party. So, um, that's from Ella.
All right, thank you, Ella. Um, it looks like that's all, does anybody have anything else, uh, to add before we adjourn today?
Thank you for all your work and all this, and Missy, thank you, Tom, and Paul and Seth.
Everybody's amazing. Okay, well, I'm taking a motion to adjourn at, uh, six forty-four.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion by, uh, Mike and a second by Tony DeBrock's end, will you?
Yes, she had to leave, yeah.
All right, I got her cookies on the back. All right, we're adjourned, although all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Bye. I'll, I'll get him to, yeah, forget it, all right, we're adjourned.